Maybe he'll come up with something else.
So that the secondary.
All rise, please.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to remember for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Before the start of this regular meeting, the board met an executive session and we did some interviews for openings on boards and commissions, and we'll make those appointments later on tonight.
Can you also discuss some personnel matters?
I was getting there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
I thought you were ending.
And we also discussed some personnel matters. Now, there's one matter that didn't make, we did not get to discuss tonight because we ran out of time, so that will be on the agenda for the next meeting, the next executive session, okay? All right, um, we have a presentation to Delaware Valley University on the celebration of its 125th anniversary. So who's here from Delaware Valley University? I understand there's a Dr. Ben, and they call you Dr. Ben because nobody knows your last name. Or can pronounce your last name. So why don't you come forward? Hundred and twenty-five years. You can stand there maybe, because somebody will probably take your picture. Okay, the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors from Doylestown Township, County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we make this proclamation. Whereas Delaware Valley University was founded 125 years ago, when in 1896 Joseph Kroszkow, an activist rabbi, entire list advocate for social justice, bought a 100-acre farm in Doylestown Township, Pennsylvania. He erected a small classroom building, hired a faculty of two, enrolled six students. His new National Farm School offered a three-year program combining what he called science with practice, and whereas Rabbi Kroszkow had young Jewish men in mind, Kroszkow insisted his school be open to all boys of all faiths and backgrounds. The curriculum combined academics with work experience and the students helped run the farm and grow their own food. This marriage of theoretical and the practical still defines Delaware Valley University today. The university's experiential learning requirement, Experience 360 in Prenz, includes internships, studies abroad, and more hands-on learning opportunities. And whereas during the post-war years, Dr. James Work headed the school and added new programs, including food industry, biology, chemistry, and business administration. In 1948, the National Farm School became the Natural Agricultural College. In 1960, reflecting more new programs, it became Delaware Valley College of Science and Agriculture. In 1969, it became CoEd. In 1989, the Board of Trustees approved the abbreviated name Delaware Valley College. And whereas in 1998, Delaware Valley College entered the field of graduate education with its first Master of Science degree in educational leadership, later followed by two Master of Business Administration degrees in general business and food and agribusiness. And whereas in December 2014, the Department, Pennsylvania Department of Education approved Delaware Valley College's application to become a university. On April 8, 2015, the school revealed its new logo and celebrated its name change from Delaware Valley College to Delaware Valley University. And whereas with the strength and determination of one man's leadership, Dr. Joshua Felstyn, who immigrated from Holland in 1939, graduated in 1942 from then the National Farm School and then stayed on becoming a professor, administrator, and finally president of the institution. He had an 80-year association with Delaware Valley University, making Doylestown Township and the university campus his home. And whereas today, the campus encompasses more than 1,100 acres. As a four-year multidisciplinary university with more than 2,000 undergraduate and graduate students, it offers rich programs in the sciences, business, and the humanities with more than 25 undergraduate majors, more than seven master's programs, a doctoral program, and a range of complementary adult education courses. Classes are small, averaging 15 students. Delaware Valley University offers $20 million in scholarships and financial aid each year. Whereas Doylestown Township is proud to be home to Delaware Valley University. I'm proud of the wonderful things it provides for our community through A-Day, the bike hike trail, connection through the campus, its contribution to the environment, its cooperation with local government and institutions, and the exceptional education it provides to the future generation of leaders. And now therefore be it proclaimed that Doylestown Township recognizes Delaware Valley University on its 125th anniversary as an institution of higher learning in our community. Duly proclaimed this 20th day of July 2021, signed by myself and Stephanie Mason, the secretary. Congratulations, we are so proud of you. Okay, the rest of the agenda is kind of lackluster compared to that, but we will do our business now. Thank you again. We have some recaps from our boards and commissions, year-end recaps. So we have first the Pension Advisory Committee Chairman Ed Denton. Is it a video?
It's video.
You don't have to say a thing.
Hello, my name is Ed Denton, and I'm Chair of the Doylestown Township Pension Advisory Committee. The Pension Advisory Committee is comprised of five residents who have experience working with pension plans, two employee representatives, the township manager, finance director, and two members of the Board of Supervisors. 2020 was a productive year for the Pension Advisory Committee. We worked extensively with the investment advisor Deb Brady to develop a discount rate recommendation for the pension plans. This target also helped inform the pension contribution amounts for the 2021 budget and five-year plan. We also conducted two in-depth reviews of the pension plan's investment portfolios with the investment manager. We drafted a new investment policy statement that articulates how the township would like the investment advisor to manage the pension plan assets moving forward. We developed several continuing education presentations to help ensure that the Board of Supervisors employees and PAC members are familiar with key concepts impacting the pension plans. And finally, we developed a list of potential actions that the township could take to reduce the pension plan deficit. The PAC recently developed our 2021 objectives. Our most significant objective this year is working with the township's management to draft an RFP for the pension plan's investment management services. It has been almost 20 years since the township shopped around for these services. The PAC will also be assisting with the evaluation of all applications and making a final recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Second, the PAC will continue to conduct semi-annual reviews of the pension portfolios with the investment advisor. In addition, the PAC will be drafting an executive summary for the Board of Supervisors and the township management in an easy-to-understand format to keep everyone apprised of key issues impacting the pension plan. Third, the PAC will continue to support the township's budget and five-year planning process, and in connection with these efforts, the PAC plans to do a deeper dive on potential actions the township could take to reduce the pension plan deficit. And finally, the PAC will continue to develop continuing education presentations to help inform and educate all parties associated with the township's pension plans. Thank you and stay safe.
Thanks, Ed, and thank you to the committee. Your service and your advice has been invaluable to the board. I speak for myself, but I'm sure the other members would agree. Thank you, thank you. Really, a lot of work in that. Yes, I knew you were going to say something.
Talking about the RFP coming up, but I just want to give you a little bit of a coming attractions. So the PAC has been working with the township over the past several months on drafting an RFP. It should be going out fairly shortly. Stephanie?
It's on the agenda tonight.
It's on urgent, yep.
Yeah, we're done, all right. So we've established a subcommittee to review all the submissions and identify the top five candidates, who will then be brought in for interviews, which will be scheduled to begin in early September. Members of the subcommittee include three township residents who are members of the PAC, myself, Tom Burke, and Colleen Mullen, a employee representative, which is Erin Walzer, and the Board of Supervisor's representatives are Jen and Nancy. Our plan is to issue a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors by late October. The Board of Supervisors will then have several weeks to review our recommendation, interview candidates if you would like, and to take a vote by the end of October. If the Board of Supervisors decides to change the investment manager, certainly Deb Brady is one of the, you know, is one of the considerations, the target date for this would happen December 31, 2020. If for some reason the process were to take longer than expected, then the changeover date would be March 31, 2021. Any questions?
Nope.
All right.
Not for me. Anybody have any questions? Anybody out there have any questions? Nope, you're good to go.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming in. Thank you. And next, we're going to hear from the Planning Commission. For being here. Judy Hendrickson is in the, in the audience, Chairman of the Planning Commission.
Hello, I'm Judy Hendrickson. I am the Chair of the Doylestown Township Planning Commission. Our year-end review presentations, we are a committee of five with two liaisons from the Board of Supervisors and a planning consultant. We have served the community through review of land development proposals with public participation. We've been meeting in person and via Zoom all year, once a month, sometimes more. We have had several workshops with discussions with the public and developers about their future needs and aspirations for development within the township. Our workshop discussions with neighboring communities about the impact of development options and comprehensive plans. We also review our zoning codes and SADO ordinances to see if we need updates depending on what is going on and trying to look at future needs and development. We make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors for land development proposals and revisions of the zoning codes and SADO ordinances. We've had several onsite visitations this year to clarify questions regarding proposals, where we go out in the field and actually look at what the situation is as we go. Our community partnerships this past year have been numerous. We started workshop meetings in addition to our regular meetings with local developers and members of the Doylestown Planning Commission, Bucks County Planning Commission, also to discuss future planning ideas and their impact on our current zoning. We have sought input from the EAC regarding open space options, landscape requirements, and future design aspirations. We have continually, we continually work with the Bike and Hike Committee in promoting and developing our network of trails in the community. We have sought recommendations from the Traffic Advisory Committee, Public Works, and our Building and Zoning Officer Sinclair Salisbury. He is at most of our meetings, and his input on what's going on on a day-to-day basis has been very important to our, looking at our codes. Our goals for 2021 are really to ramp up our workshop sessions with developers and public and our neighboring communities, the County Planning Commission, in order to address the changing needs of the community and to be able to educate ourselves as to best serve those needs going forward. We have a continued dialogue with our zoning officer to understand what issues are at hand and our current zoning and SADO ordinances. We support the Green Initiative in the community by examining our Green Points Program to see if we can strengthen it and promote it. Continued examination and update recommendations of our SADO and zoning ordinances, and work with the County Planning Commission on ideas to use their land at Alm's House and Route 611 and the impact that that may have with our zoning. We meet, like I said, every month, sometimes more, and it is important that the public come out and join us, so we invite you all to come join us. The dates for our meetings are always posted online, so you can see where we are there, and we look forward to more ongoing dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy, and Tom Kelso from the Planning Commission is also with us tonight. Hi, Tom. All right, thank you for your work and for taking the time to tell us what it is that you're doing. Of course, we know what you're doing because all your approvals come before us, so thank you, thank you.
They're the laboring war for most of the development opportunities in the township, so.
Can't do it without you, thank you. And next, we're going to hear from the Public Water Sewer Advisory Board Chairman Joe Van Houten, who's here as well.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Van Houten. I'm the Chairman of the Doylestown Township Public Water Sewer Advisory Committee. Our group is responsible for making a determination if public sewer and/or water is needed in a, any part of the township. I have a hard-working, dedicated team that meets on the third Thursday of every month here at the Township Building at 5:30, and we're also meeting by Zoom during these interesting times. At the moment, I have a couple of projects that, some of which I'm sure all of you can see are taking place. The Pebble Ridge-Wood Ridge Sewer Project, which our committee had worked on for many years and finally made a recommendation several years ago to the Board of Supervisors to move forward with the project, which they obviously did approve. That project should have been wrapping up about now, but due to weather delays, we're working on probably wrapping up sometime in, in spring of this year. At least that's the latest from Bucks County Water and Sewer. You can look at the Doylestown Township website for, for regular updates. Couple of the things that our committee is working on now, one of them is an update to the 537 Plan. 537 Plan is a sewage facilities program in the state of Pennsylvania, which addresses existing sewage disposal needs along with preventing future problems through proper planning. So it's a very involved process. What we're doing is, is taking a look at the parts of the township that do not have sewers at the moment and putting a plan together to evaluate those areas and to help determine if sewers are needed in the future, what that would look like. In addition, our committee is also taking a look and focusing more on the water aspect. We've spent years focusing on sewer, and more recently, you've seen a lot of, a lot of attention in the, in the news regarding PFAS and PFOAs and other things that have contaminated the groundwater within our part of Bucks County. So our team is currently looking at private wells within our township and ways of being able to educate the residents on what to look for and how to maintain those wells. So keep a, an eye out in the coming months in the Township newsletter and also on the Township website for, for information pertaining to, to your private wells. Outside of that, I would like to say that we do have a couple of openings on the Public Water Sewer Advisory Committee, and we would invite those of you in the township viewing this right now, if you have an interest in taking part, to, to please contact the Township Supervisor Stephanie Mason, myself, Joe Van Houten, if you are interested in, in taking part in our committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you to your committee as well. All right, any visitors to public comment tonight? Sir, please come and take the podium and let us know who you are.
It seems like I'm finding a lot of TV stars, so I'll try to get this pretty. My name is Paul Myers. I live at 15 Mystic View Lane in Doylestown with my wife. We've lived there for the past 28 years, and we are extremely happy living in Doylestown Township. I love the building, I love the police department. Notice I said, because you're right next to me, chief, so. But anytime we had a problem, you guys were right on top of things, and I do appreciate that. Let me start by saying ironically, yesterday, we had several contractors in our development paving driveways for six homes. There's a real sense of pride in our neighborhood, however it is diminished by the way our streets look. Potholes, grass growing in the street, many, many patch jobs, and very large cracks. The fellows that come out in the yellow truck and try to patch, they could be there three months. There's just, I don't know which one they would pick, but I love the guys because they're out there trying to do their best. And I understand you have projects in other places, but I'm here to, for the residents of Mystic View Lane, Devon Riding Lanes, Longview Circle, to ask when in the near future our streets will be paved. I think a field trip maybe by some of the members of the board to really go out. You look thrilled, all thrilled about this field trip.
We, we do that.
You do that?
Yeah, we do.
All right, can you come down Mystic View Lane and see us?
Unfortunately, due to the COVID, we weren't unable to do that, but we have a tradition of doing, and I take all the supervisors along with the Township Engineer and the Director of Operations, and I put them all in a van, and we drive them around the township to look at various road conditions. As I said, unfortunately, in 2021, we were unable to do that due to COVID, but I'm going to turn this over to our Director of Operations and our Township Engineer, because they have been reviewing our road programs and I think may be able to address some of your concerns.
We were well aware of, of the conditions. In, in 2018, we, we asked the board and.
I can't, I'm hard of hearing, so I have.
Okay, any better?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So in, in 2018, we had a, a road survey done of the entire road network and, and just as past June, at the Budget Work Session, Sean Torpey and myself, we prepared a presentation to the board about the road program, the five-year road program, as well as the like six-to-10-year road program, and identifying the roads that we feel that need attention and need to be addressed in that five-year plan. And I think, and I'm actually looking at the list right now, unfortunately, we're not be able to pull it up and show you, but we did identify Mystic View and the Ridings Development as one of the roads that, the neighborhoods that we were looking for in the five-year plan. Okay, so that is 2022 to 2025 that we'd like to include in the road program, that we would like to budget for, and that we'd propose to the board that we would be repaving in those, in those years.
Is there, and with this acoustic here, it's, it's my problem with my hearing. Is there, is there a list that you're going to come out with that say these are the worst ones, the best ones, or?
We can, we, we felt that, we, we did do a presentation where we did rank them, and we did present to the board ones we thought needed attention sooner than later, and meaning if, with the board's approval, yes, we can, we can publish that information and provide that to the residents, whether it's on the website or to directly, we can do that.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah, we can do.
Yeah, give it to this gentleman, Mr. Myers, and then put it on the site. Does that, everyone good with that?
That's great, sounds good.
So you'll know where you rank, where you stand in the ranking.
I'm sorry.
You'll, you'll, you'll see where you are in, in the next five-year plan, okay?
Okay, we're good.
But it's on the list.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Any other public comment, questions, concerns, none? Okay, good, moving on. The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, August 17 at 7:00 PM. We're going to have budget work sessions on September 21, October 5, and October 19, all at 5 o'clock, and they're all, public, please come, and they're all going to be in this room. Upcoming township events under the heading of the Thompson Performing Arts Series for 2021, on July 21, that's this Wednesday, Class Act, it's a Top 40s band. On July 28, Cherry Lane, Cherry Lane Band, that's a local band. On August 4 is Jesse Garen and Band, who's, that's an Elvis tribute, and on August 11, the Sensational Soul Cruisers, which is my all-time favorite Motown band. And don't forget to visit the new Warwick Farms Beer Garden while enjoying the sounds of summer. Has anyone been to the Beer Garden yet? It's, it's kind of cool, okay. All the concerts are free at the CNN Amphitheater in Central Park. We won't have any indoor location this year, so if it's, come, come to the concert, if it rains, then you can go home. All concerts are going to be held, hopefully, unless it's, you know, really, really bad forecast. Okay, the annual golf outing is real important, it's August 23, Doylestown Country Club. All the proceeds from the golf outing go to our park system. We're going to have the Doylestown Township National Night Out organized by our own Sergeant Whiteside, Whiteside. She has organized the National Night Out, that's also sponsored by our PBA, and it's going to be in Central Park at August 8 at 4:00 PM, uh, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, sorry, August 3, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and you're going to see guided police station tours, police demonstrations, entertainment, and please come out. The fifth annual, annual Flyers, Philadelphia Flyers Community Caravan presented by Xfinity is coming to Doylestown, and we're going to see the gritty mascot and some Flyers personalities in Central Park, and that's on August 4 and at 4:00 PM. A caravan is going to come to Central Park and then run through Doylestown Crossing, which crosses the street, and come back to Central Park, and they'll have a lot of giveaways. So that's August 4 at 4:00 PM, Central Park. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the first and first, first and fourth Tuesday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and the third Saturday of each month from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Drop-off sites, the New Britain Entrance to Central Park, and please visit our website for more information. And the 2021 Bucks County Hazardous, Household Hazardous Waste Collection events, registration is required, August 14, it's at Lower Bucks, August, excuse me, October 30, it's at Upper Bucks, and you can go on site, on our site to see where those drop-offs will be. Next item on the agenda, moving on to the minutes approval for the regular meeting of June 15, 2021. Is there, have you all had a chance to review them, or any corrections or changes? Is there a motion to approve them?
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm going to call the vote, but before I do so, I'm going to approve only until the approval of the Questica question, because after that I left, so I'm going to just approve my participation up to the Questica question. So I'm going to call the question for the rest, say a favor, an aye or?
Aye.
Thank you. And then Ryan, you're, you're okay with the rest of it then?
Yep.
Okay, good. And then the budget work, the budget work notes from that June 15 as well? Is there a motion to approve them?
I'll make the motion to approve the budget session.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I had a change on that.
Okay. Let's go back.
Take it back, go back. On page 25 of the PDF, it said that Ms. Herring asked if $12 is high for this model for part-time wage. I actually just wanted clarification as to whether $12 was the right number. I don't think it's high, so I wanted to change it to say I had a question about the $12 part-time wage.
Where, where are you, Jen?
Sorry, it's the PDF, page 25.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
So I'm sorry if you're looking paper.
Yeah, I got paper, sorry.
It's at the top, it's the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, section B.
Oh, I see, Ms. Herring asked if $12 is high for this model for a part-time wage?
Right, I wasn't asking if it was high, I just was asking if it was appropriate.
Okay. So you would like the minutes to reflect, or. So you would like the minutes to reflect, or the notes to reflect a correction that you were asking if the $12 is an appropriate wage for this?
That's what I'd like to do.
Okay, do you, these have been approved, so let's undo that, re-approve them with that correction. Is there a motion to approve the notes with that correction?
I'll make the motion.
Do you want to second that, Dan?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor with approval on the notes with that correction? Say favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is reports from, no correspondence, of reports from the solicitor.
I want to comment on some, two recent statutes adopted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The first is Act 65 of 2021, which modified the Sunshine Act by requiring that municipalities post the agenda for Board of Supervisors meetings and other advertised meetings at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting on their website. Secondly, that a copy of the agenda must be posted on the township building somewhere available to the public. And lastly, sufficient copies of the agenda should be placed in the meeting room for people to pick up if they come to the meeting. In addition, if a matter is not on the posted agenda, the Board of Supervisors or other bodies may not take official action on the matter except if it involves a clear emergency, it arose within 24 hours before the meeting, is de minimis in nature, and does not involve the expenditure of funds or earning into a contract. Now, if something should arise during the meeting because of public comment that comes into the township, you can act as long as it's de minimis and does not involve the expenditure of funds. However, irrespective of all of that, the board may vote by majority vote to take action on something that was not posted or not de minimis, but you have to state the reasons why you're taking action that night, and you must post an amended agenda to reflect that item the next day on your website. You pretty much do what is asked anyway.
We do this already, yeah.
And you're not usually bringing up things off the wall, but in any event, there are the new requirements that are going to be imposed starting in September, but I suggested to Stephanie it should begin in August so that they're familiar with how it works. The second is Act 27, pardon me, that was adopted, which is called the Agricultural Business Statute. And what it basically says, if you are an agriculture-related property and you are engaging in farm-related entertainment or farm-related tourism, that you have now the ability to have protection from civil liability for any damages that may occur as a result of your agritourism or your agri-entertainment offerings. However, in order to be free of any liability for any damages or claims, number one, a warning sign has to be posted that's visible to the public who are coming to your event. You must enter into a written agreement with any participant. That means someone coming to your event has to enter into a written agreement, and it says, you can print it on a ticket. Now, that's, you know, can you imagine? And it doesn't have to be a four-page agreement, it's just sort of a, it's got to be something which is visible, something that describes the fact that you are, there are dangers here and you're taking some risk. Now, there are exceptions to that liability, pardon me, that exception to immunity is one, if it's, the act is done in a grossly negligent manner and causes injury or damage to a participant, if the agricultural, agritourism activity causes a damage intentionally. Next, that there was inaction which constitute criminal conduct or they fail or falsely warn the public about a dangerous condition. And this does not apply at all to overnight accommodations, weddings, or concerts, or food and beverage services. So that's pretty much the general gist of it. And obviously, the township is not in the agricultural business, but obviously, we do have occasional farm activities that may have something like this. So it would be appropriate if you can identify those folks, and Stephanie can send a little note out to them about the content of it.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
Nope.
Chief?
Nothing to report.
Township engineer?
Nothing to report.
Director of Operations, you've got a boatload of stuff.
We do. I'm going to ask Mr. Torpey to go over the 2021 Road Program Paving Part II bids and award recommendation, please.
Dave, you're, I have trouble listening to what you're saying.
You're mumbling.
I don't say you're mumbling, but there's something--
You are. The microphone is down.
Yeah, it was, okay. Mr. Torpey is going to review the 2021 Road Program Part II Award Recommendation.
That was better.
We received three bids. We opened them July 13th. The low bidder was James D. Morrissey. They met all the requirements of the contract, and we would like to ask the board to award the project to James D. Morrissey in the amount of $252,737.85. This price includes the base bid and the alternate bids contingent upon the execution of the contract and supply of the required bonds and insurance.
Bless you. All right, is there a motion to approve the contract to J.D. Morrissey, Inc.?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
This second item is asking the board to approve a scope of work for Pinonei Associates to conduct the construction stakeout for the Pebble Ridge Wood Ridge curbing project. This is needed for the contractor to set proper elevations of the new curbing. Mr. Torpey provided us with a scope of work totaling $43,750. This is a time-of-material contract. I'm asking for the board's approval to award this scope of work to complete this work.
Any questions on the request? Is there a motion to approve the request?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item is the 2021-22 Fuel Bid Award Recommendation. On behalf of the Consortium of Local Governments, Upper Southampton Township solicited bids for the fuel listed in the bid tabulation attached to my memo. I am recommending that the board accept the bid from Papco Incorporated to supply regular unleaded fuel, ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel, and additionally, the winter additive for the diesel. These are the market fluctuation prices plus, and I'll read off the amounts. The amount for the regular unleaded is .1813 cents per gallon in addition to the market fluctuation price. For the ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel, it's market fluctuation price plus .2307 cents per gallon, and the winter additive at .0375 cents per gallon. I'm asking for the board's approval for the 22-21 Fuel Contract to Papco Incorporated.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bids that were provided through the Bucks County Consortium?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and there's one more.
There's two more. We, I, we had a 2021 pavement marking contract. I'm asking board's approval to re-advertise the project. We did advertise it. We did the proper procedures. We advertised the paper, we put it on Penn Bid, we received no bids. And in recommendation of Penn Bid, we did not open them because we'd received no bids. I'm asking the board's approval to re-advertise and to repost the solicitation on Penn Bid, and so we can solicit bids for the 21 pavement marking contract.
If you get no more bids this time, you can go out and negotiate with someone to do the work.
Thank you all for that direction.
All right, we need to re-advertise. Is there a motion to approve the re-advertising of the 2021 Pavement Marking Contract?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one more.
One more. This is the 2021 Environmental Permitting Proposal, Part II. If you recall, I don't know the exact date, but you had authorized Pinonei Associates to obtain DEP permits for our structures. This is part two to that proposal. There's a total of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 9 structures that we need to obtain DEP permits for so that we can, as part of our bridge inspection program, if we need to make repairs, we have the permits. The proposal is for a total of $79,400, I'm sorry, $79,245. I'm asking for the board's approval.
There are eight of them.
Eight.
Yeah, yes, okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the 2020 Environmental, 2021 Environmental Permitting Proposal Number Two?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good work. Manager?
Yes. In your packet, in your packet is the request for proposal of our Pension Fund Investments Advisor Services. This has been reviewed by the solicitor, and all the suggestions he made were incorporated on Friday before the latest draft of the proposal went into your packet. As you heard from Mr. Denton, the Pension Advisory Committee is looking to move this project along in 2021, looking for the board's authorization to circulate this RFP, putting it on Penn Bid, as well as sending it to a variety of consultants that do this type of work. I would like to make the motion to approve the RFP for-- Approve the RFP.
I'd like to second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Your comments were quite detailed.
Well, you know, I have to make sure nothing happens that I didn't want to see again, so.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Stephanie?
Yes, we did receive a letter of resignation from longtime volunteer Dick Bach on the DTMA. He served on DTMA for a number of years and also served as chairman of that committee upon his resignation recently as he has, is moved out of the township.
No, we'll need a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion with regret. Thank you for your service.
Yes. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, Stephanie, is your Park and Recreation Center question.
Yes.
We read the memo.
Okay, everyone's read the memo, and in conversation with Sylvia Hoffman from MKSD, she's looking for direction from the township at this time as really two things. One, are we staying with the RFP to do a pre-engineered building? Or should they pivot and begin a design of what I'd like to call a sticks-and-brick building that was suggested in terms of a Havreford facility or something similar to that? It was a very good suggestion, but I, there's some concerns that Ms. Hoffman had when I shared that information with her. I have put that into the memo, but am looking for direction from the board just on that at this time.
Does everybody understand the question?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thoughts?
I would like to keep the RFP.
You want to keep what we've asked to have, to be--
I am with Jen.
Yeah, I'm also on the pre-engineered building side.
Okay. Nancy, this was your idea, you want to speak to this?
Sure. Well, I was just looking, when I, Jen's concerns about being LEED certified, and just, I was just exploring what other communities have done. And Havreford, I think, was 35,000 square feet versus I think we're looking at more like 20,000. I know it was done quite a while ago, but I think their amount that they put out was 8.25. So I didn't know if we could scale that down. I liked the opportunity that that particular building offered in terms of gym space and also the services that Karen often discusses, having that space that could be used for programs or when it's not being used for programs, that it could be used as a rental so that we can serve and offer those opportunities for people to share and celebrate milestones with their family. I also did really like and would love to see that indoor track, which is one of the reasons it was two-story. I'm not, when you talk about sticks and mortar versus prefab, it was more the concept is what I'm really going for more so, and what it offers to the community and the connection it offers more so than, and just because it was LEED, I wanted to sort of look into what Janet talked about. My thought was really, my focus really is what services we're going to provide to our community and the connectivity that we can offer. We've been talking about this for a long time, so that's my goal. When I did that, it was not so much to throw the RFP off, but to maybe provide a different lens. I know I want to be a team player, and I'm sort of coming in on the later end of the discussions with the Park and Rec Center, but I just wanted to share because this was, you know, one of the reasons I'm here.
Okay. The consensus of the board is that we stay with the original RFP design, and I agree with that.
Yeah, and--
Jen has ideas that we, you know, we may, I mean Jen, Nancy has ideas that we may--
And Nancy and I, you know, Nancy, I talked to you about this a little bit this morning. I mean, listen, I was a huge proponent for the second-floor track. It comes down to cost, though, and starting from a brick and mortar. I mean, of course, if it was just, what do you want, brick and mortar or prefab? I want brick and mortar. I want, but it just, it's not going to work with the cost that, and the budget that we're trying to stay within. And also, too, coming down to making sure that we are, you know, as Jen brought up, making sure that we're doing things to stay, to follow and do green, like, those are, well, I agree, and I want to go that direction, there are additional costs. So like, let's look at, before we go to, if we can do prefab and also make it green, that's--
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
That would be my preference.
Yes, yeah.
That would be my preference.
And they are trying, they are going to work that in. They heard that very clearly from the board on June 15th, and they're going to work that into the pre-engineered building. But they saw this information and they wanted clarification because, you know, they too thought that was a, you know, it's a beautiful building and everything, but, you know, they want to stick with, you know, they wanted to say, what do we want? And thank you.
My focus was more the services we're providing. I think that one had a catering kitchen, those types of things, which can be talked about another time. Those are the types of things I was more focused on, not so much the layout.
Okay. Well, thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right, we're back to moving on with, as the original design. Okay. Uh huh, thank you. Anything else, Stephanie?
Yes, I have a couple of things. And Tom Kelso is here, and I believe the folks in the back have the map. I did put a memo in the board's packet regarding a grant opportunity, and we did discuss this at the Bike-Hike Committee this morning. Judy Hendricks was there, as was Nancy. And this is an opportunity for a Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development grant. It's called their Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant. It includes the design, construction, inspection costs for the segment. And you might recall earlier this year, the Bike-Hike Committee and our consultants looked at feasibility study, and this would be the first segment of that from the backside of Central Park. They are strongly recommending that your grants, these type of grants are looked favorably upon if we have a small match in it. And I am suggesting of the proposed cost for the grant of $762,360.20 that we do something like $76,000. Mr. Kelso's here, as you know, he always gives you a little background on what Bike and Hike is doing and a project like this.
Thank you. And this is a unique opportunity with this grant because DCED usually requires about a 30% match. They, they put that aside this year, so I think there'll be a lot of competition on it. And that's why our consultant and the Bike and Hike Committee was recommending that we do throw some match into it to be a little more competitive. And the proposed section of the trail is shown on the, on the screen right now. And it's the part that's in purple extending from the New Britain Road Access into Central Park, down New Britain Road and across the bypass bridge. And I think one reason we chose that was we really don't need any easements. It's a pretty straightforward trail segment. We've talked about it for years. We talked about it with Dick John about rehabilitating New Britain Road even, and doing that as part of this. And it also supports the new recreation center, having a trail extend from that part of the park over to Easton Road. And it provides connections to the, the existing Warden Road Trail and what we tend to call the, the Tabor Home Trail, the Eastern Road Trail into Doylestown that's rapidly developing.
What, what's that thing running across?
Oh, that's the, they're doing that in the back, that's Ed's hand.
The little worm thing is like.
There's a little hand running across there, yeah. He's just trying to point where it is, yeah. Yeah, the, the part I think is, is just going to tie into the green.
Yeah, that's.
His hand is going a little too far, but that would be the future trail that we studied earlier this year in February, remember when we had that virtual room? He's making me a little ill with moves.
All right. I, I think we get it, right?
Yeah, we're looking to apply.
Yeah, so you apply, but the, the cost, if we get it, would be in twenty-twenty-three, correct?
Yeah, I, I don't think we'll be spending much of this money until the year twenty-twenty-three. I mean, it takes us a year to get the grant and if we get it and go through all that, so the bulk of the money would be in the twenty-twenty-three budget.
We'll have to stick it on a twenty-twenty-two budget, just to make sure we have it, right?
The budget analyst is shaking his head in the back room, he said he'll, he'll make sure we.
All right, thank you. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I, I do have a question for Mr. Kelso. Why do the trail going back behind the Warden Road development instead of up Warden Road itself, which is a relatively quiet road?
That was done as part of the New Beck development, I forget what we called that little segment there where the new homes are.
Walnut Ridge.
End of Warden Road and Mr. Beck put that in for us and the Warden Home residents, we worked with them at the time and they really weren't supporting extending it.
Okay.
And Warden Road is basically a very low, what we call a very low-stress road.
Right.
Walking on the road is, is as safe as you can get in Doylestown Township.
And just going from my experience of having ridden down Warden Road many a times from where that meets up there and that kind of thing.
I, I was kidding somebody, I was riding my bike the other morning and I think I was on Short Road or something and there were two people walking their dogs right down the middle of the road and I, I said to them, isn't it great to live in Doylestown Township where you can just walk down the middle of a road with your dogs? And it is, and that Warden Road is one of those roads and we've got plenty of those that will never put trails on because they're, they're safe and.
Yeah, that's good. There are places like that, yeah. Um, thanks for your presentation, what, what's the pleasure of the board?
We're requesting the board's permission to make this grant application.
Motion to authorize submitting the grant, understanding there may be a seventy-six thousand dollar match as bar the grant application.
Is there a motion to same?
I'll make the motion, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
You're good to go, Tom, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming again. Anything else, Stephanie?
Um, yes, I have a training request for the ICMA Annual Conference.
Is there a motion to approve her training request?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Give us the memo, we don't have to.
Okay, and lastly, I just want to remind the board about the PSAT's Annual Business Meeting, the Centennial Celebration, October fourteenth and fifteenth in Hershey. Registration opens, I believe, it's August second. I know Ms. Herring has indicated she's going to attend, if anyone else wants to.
You're doing the overnight?
Please let me.
Good.
Yeah, it starts early on, in Friday morning, so you probably want to be there for the dinner on Thursday. If anybody wants to go, please let me know and we'll take care of your registration.
August second is the deadline.
Yes, let me know that morning, it's going to be the man rush to, for PSATs to get everybody on, you know, plugged in.
Okay.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thanks, Stephanie, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
We have no public hearing tonight, we have no unfinished business tonight.
Supervisors.
Oh yeah, we do have supervisors coming. I always, you know, look, you should see my paper, it's, I have highlights, highlights, supervisors squared around there. And I still forget you. Okay, anything, Deanne?
Uh, yeah, earlier tonight, we interviewed several people for our open positions on our boards and committees. And as the liaison to the Public Water and Sewer Board, I would like to make the recommendation that we appoint Robert Repko as a new member of that committee.
I'll second that. Okay, thank you, all in favor of Bob Repko to the Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and I just want to say real quick about the, the Del Val proclamation we had that, I, I think one of the best things about Doylestown in a weird way is that you can go back and say, oh yeah, we have a university in this town.
Yeah.
It's just one of those things, it's always been there and you just kind of forget about it.
Yeah.
It's an integral part of what Doylestown is. And the, the last piece I have is just on behalf of the EAC, they have their native plant garden workshop at the end of the month, it's always the last Saturday of the month. They are actively working on that and they have also started working on that water basin back behind, on the back end of Central Park to start pulling out some of the invasive plants and free up some of the trees that we planted over the years that have been overrun. And we've been getting a lot of help from not just Doylestown residents, but from residents across the area as part of Penn State's Waterkeeper Alliance and Master Gardener Class.
That's great. Thank you. Ryan?
Uh, yes, two things. First, our newly formed Local Traffic Advisory Committee met today at five o'clock. And representing the township as chairman is Dave Tomco and as vice chairman is Sergeant Jones. And as you guys know, we changed this to be, operate a little bit differently, we'll meet kind of as needed and, you know, addressing and we, and there are certain parameters that will kind of send a go for traffic studies. But I'm excited about like the direction moving forward and I think it's going to be a new way to kind of monitor the traffic situations within the township. Also, when we met tonight, we interviewed Brett, I'm going to mess up his name.
Rugi.
Rugi.
Rugi. Rugi, who interviewed for the Park and Board Committee and I'd like to nominate him, I thought he was great.
Okay, there's a, is a motion to nominate Mr. Rugi to the Park and Rec Board, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Anything else, Ryan?
That's it.
Yes, Ms. Herring?
Nothing today, thank you.
Okay. Nancy?
Um, nothing to say, other than thank you to the committees you presented today and thought they did a great job. We really have impressive volunteers and very robust committees.
Well, as liaison to the DTMA, oh wait, we also had the auditor, I'll do the two of them. The DTMA liaison, I would like to nominate Rob Schaefer to the board, a board position at the DTMA, you need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and then Mr. Weisell, I didn't catch his first name.
Chris.
Chris?
Chris.
Chris Weisell has applied to the auditor position, is there a motion to approve Ms. Weisell, Mr. Weisell?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's all I got. Well, I got more, but you don't want, I don't want to bore you. All right, moving on. Public hearing none, unfinished business none, new business, proposed warrantless arrest ordinance, we need to advertise this new ordinance.
I think you saw the chief's memorandum and I prepared a draft and if you're inclined to proceed, just the motion would authorize me to advertise it for consideration by the board, probably at your August meeting.
Or, you know, I was surprised by this, I thought we already had one.
I think we all probably did, though we had one.
On air, on the side of caution, we're going to, because we've looked at ordinances, we've looked at resolutions, we just cannot locate it and I'm surprised that.
Okay, all right, well, let's advertise, there's a motion to advertise this ordinance.
I have some questions and some maybe corrections.
Okay.
My first question is, what happens now, like when, if somebody is, if one of your officers come across somebody who is drunk publicly, how does that, how does that work now?
We have, we have been, we have been following this.
Following this, okay.
This is part, this is Rules of Criminal Procedure, we do this every day.
Okay.
All these exact rules.
Okay. I was also curious about some of the citations. There is under subsection one twenty-two point one, there's a citation for forty-two PACSA. I wasn't sure exactly why we cited that part of it, that was.
Say that one.
In, in the section one.
Mm-hmm.
You cite forty-two PACSA six-three-two-four, section three, subsection three. I wasn't entirely sure why we, why we looked at that subsection.
That's part, title forty-two is the Rules of Criminal Procedure, which allows us to, to take those steps. These are summary offenses and normally you're not, you're not doing a warrantless arrest for a summary offense, this is, I'm not sure I.
That one seems to just apply to minors, it has something to do with minors and.
No, it has to do with any, any arrest, any individual.
The subsection six-three?
It's, yeah, my understanding, unless I'm reading it wrong.
Between the chief and I, if there's a misstatement from his source, we'll.
Okay.
We'll make sure that, because we can't, you don't take minors into custody very often.
We can for these.
Can, but you're.
Because it does talk about underage drinking, I think that it probably does apply in some way, I just didn't understand.
Well, underage drinking, is anybody under the age of.
Not minors necessarily. Well, necessarily, right. So that was one of them, there's a, there is a typo.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, probably, instead of probable.
I just picked up on that right there.
Yeah. Um, I also noticed, I, I did review some other municipalities or similar ordinances and I noticed that they didn't really look at Pennsylvania Rule of Civil Procedure seventy-one. They often referred to Title two thirty-four, Rule four forty-one, four forty and four forty-one. I think seventy-one might be, and I might, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know, but it may be an older rule that was superseded. So if you could look into that before we.
Could you be kind enough, when you have a moment, to kind of synthesize this and email to chief and I?
Yes.
So we have a understanding of, we'll be obviously prepared to either make adjustments before the hearing or to provide answers well before that.
Okay, yeah. So I'll send you an email with those details.
Yeah, just questions you have in the comments.
Questions I have, yeah. So I do, I do have a couple other ones that are just general question. In, what is it, B one, it said the defendant is a resident of the Commonwealth. I wasn't sure why that was, I saw that is common in a lot of these, but I wasn't sure why we, seeing as that you have to worry about flight risk, is it?
Because non-residents, non-resident individuals that reside outside the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we can, under different statutes, we can take them into custody and have them arraigned because the flight risk and their, and their ability to appear in court is less.
Okay.
This is dealing with people that live in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania who have good ID, who have confirmed residence here.
Okay.
So it's still allowing us to take that step.
It relates to the, okay. I'll, I'll send you the information after this because there's a couple other.
Yeah, send it to chief and I and.
Right.
We will attend to it.
Um, but the, the main question I had was, this is for accreditation, is that right?
It is one of the standards that this is, this is a, an ordinance is in, in existence and that's what made us look for these ordinance and we couldn't find it, so that's why we're doing it.
Is this a product of the, the consultant that we hired?
Yes, he picked up one of them.
Oh, that's good. Was he able to give us a, us the wording for this or was this from?
We needed.
Did we internally create that?
He gave us a list of multiple sample ordinances and municipalities, I picked one that looked reasonable to me.
Okay.
Um, the bottom line is, like I said, we've been following this, the thing is, and I'm not quite sure why it has to be an ordinance, because the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Rules of Criminal Procedure say you do this. You have the ability to arrest somebody without a warrant for these offenses and you must do this, this and this. So we've been following it, I'm not quite sure why it's accreditation standard, it is, so we're going to comply.
Right, well, I don't know if our solicitor has a reason.
I think we'll follow the consultant's recommendations and can't hurt.
I, I would like to move to table this until we look into it a little bit further, is there any time, pressing time?
No, we can certainly do it in September, have a provision back next month, don't you think?
Yeah, I would just ask.
We waited all this time.
I would just ask if you, if you have these questions in advance, you can, you can send them to me, I can prepare myself and I can answer them, I mean, because right now, I'm kind of, I'm guessing a little bit.
Okay.
I know the Rules of Criminal Procedure, I know what we do, I know what we're allowed to do, what we're not allowed to do.
Right.
What these individual subsections and stuff.
Yeah.
I'm using sample ordinances, I'm trusting certain people.
I appreciate it, I.
I would concur because I think it's because Jen's raised interesting issues, other board members may have, like, know the answers, so.
Well, the only way to actually do, answer these questions, you have to pull out the forty-two PACSA, this, this consolidated statutes and look at them, I mean, that's the only way to do it.
So I would.
So we don't have, we don't have the consolidated statutes here, he doesn't have them, he doesn't have them, so you're going to have to do that, so.
I would recommend.
Can we put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
We table it for your consideration for advertising to the next meeting.
Yeah, let's do that, okay. I need a motion to table.
I'll make the motion to table as we go to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, okay, table it is. All right, um, new business under, new business, streetlight agreement from, with Old Colonial Green, is anybody here from Old Colonial Green? Nope, okay. Okay, um, everyone saw, we're going to sell the streetlights in Old Colonial Green, I believe there are thirteen of them for a dollar, everyone okay with that? Yep.
I think the township administration is happy to be rid of them.
All right, is there a motion to approve the sale of the streetlights in Old Colonial Green to the Old Colonial Green Housing Development?
I'll make the motion.
Whatever they're called.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, to the Old Colonial Green Property Owners Association, okay? There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
It's a dollar closer to the Parks and Rec building.
Yeah, we can. We claim it for the rec fund, okay. All right, ICA, ICMA, RCDC Plan Amendment, all right, somebody.
Ken is here and we have the DC plan and there are some things that came up in the Auditor General's report regarding when the contributions are made. And he went over that, we did review it with the solicitor and he has his memo there, he's here to answer any questions the board might have. But we would recommend that we work with ICMA RC to make those changes. Ken, do you have any, did I hit the highlights on that?
Uh, yes, you did, you hit the highlights. So what I'm looking for is the board approval of the adoption of the changes in the agreement between ICMA RC, Mission Square and the Township.
Motion would be, if you're so inclined, would be to approve the revised agreement with ICMA related to the RCDC plan.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Everyone understand what's going on here? Okay, there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, Bike Hike Trail easement, Stonington Farm.
Yes. Um, these are the deeds of easement as part of our grant that we have for the Shady Retreat Road Safe Roots to School. We are bringing the trail from Butler Ave down along Burpee Road and we have worked with the owners of the Stonington Farm, or Stonington Apartment Complex there. And they have granted us all the necessary easements with no compensation. So we would ask the board to approve these so that we can get them recorded and shared with the DVR PC who has given us the grant.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thanks, Stephanie. Sure. Yes, you may.
I, I just wanted to commend Stephanie on her persistence in getting this easement. If you followed the emails and.
No, better.
I'm sure Jeff did.
I did.
Jeff did, yeah.
It was, it was torture.
There's a lot to be said for tenacity and.
Patience.
In a kind and gentle way.
Yes, that is, that is Stephanie, kind, gentle, tenacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, all right. Zoning hearing board, oh, excuse me, Delaware Valley Turf, there's a request for land development.
Yes, the applicant is here, they're looking for a waiver of land development, this is property located at eighteen sixty-four Southeastern Road.
What is your recommendation?
Our recommendation would be to waive the land development process, up on the screen, you see the site. They are replacing, I believe, a building that's back there, Kristen, I don't know if you want to take the mic and maybe walk us through very quickly.
The only thing the staff recommend obviously is a waiver of land development agreement.
Yeah. Yes.
That, other than that, the staff was supportive of waiving land development.
Okay. Do we need, do you want to say?
Unless anybody has any questions, what you're putting up there, real quick, just a second.
Questions? Anybody have any questions? Jen, do you have questions? I can see your face. No, no questions.
She had questions an hour ago, but not now.
Enough questions?
I mean, I'm good with this. I'll make a motion.
Motion would be to approve the waiver of land development for the Delaware Valley Turf property, subject to the execution of a waiver of land development agreement by the applicant.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
All right. Any questions? Do you have any questions?
No.
All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for sitting out the meeting. Okay, that's not too bad. So, 10 after 8. All right, next item on the agenda.
Zoning Hearing Board.
Zoning Hearing Board applications, 270 Old New Road and 10 Greenway. What is your recommendation, madam?
My recommendations leave both matters to the zoning hearing board.
So be it. Treasures Report, July 20, 2021. You've all seen it electronically. Is there a motion to approve the Treasures Report for July 20?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Similarly, the Bills List for July 20, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not going to read all of the announcements, but our next meeting is August 17, and we have three budget work sessions coming up at 5:00 on September 21, October 5, October 19. We have a concert tomorrow, class act in Central Park. We have the PBA, really awesome thing, PBA National Night Out on August 3 at 4:00 and 8:00 PM in Central Park. The golf outing on August 23. And then Gritty from the Philadelphia Flyers and some other personnel are going to be here on August 4 at Central Park at 4:00 PM. Lots going on. I'm not going to read anymore. So, good night, everybody. Good meeting. I appreciate everybody's being here.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant.
Ken?
You know, add basketball court space.
Right. So I guess in follow-up, then, my question is, you're adding almost 6,000 square feet in option 3. So it seems as if that's actually added for multipurpose space, correct?
Both.
Not really a bigger gym.
No, you're getting a bigger gym.
Well, 2,500 or so is a bigger gym, so the remaining would be more multipurpose space.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to clarify. Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, so we can say good night to these folks. We have some more, some more work for you to do.
Sounds good.
And we'll touch base, I guess, soon. For our, for our purposes, I suggest that we get the information back that we're seeking for tonight.
Yeah, I think if we move into these next, we need the questions answered before we go into these next pieces, I think.
Right.
Because it's moot to have these discussions on these next pieces without having answers to the questions that I think are good questions from Dan and Jen.
So, yeah, those questions
And Nancy.